She should be through in a second.
Alright.
Overall, I did change some things. It looks a lot better than it did last year since we went up on the miller's rate. That helped a lot. I added back in impact aid and stuff due to the law saying it's all anticipated revenues instead of, you know, like not exact, like Ms. Kay said she wasn't, you know, a hundred percent certain we would get it, but we do anticipate it every year. So I feel like it should be included.
Yeah, that's, that's it for the allowance for the core problem.
Two fifty, two seventy five, whatever.
I think it's right at two seventy. They give us two forty-five and then we usually get another twenty-five throughout the year.
Okay.
They've been emailing pretty regular asking if we didn't want the money to put a stop payment on because they were about to send out more. I didn't respond.
They're cutting all that too. Surely we ought to get a good shit.
Exactly.
They're cutting a bunch.
I didn't respond. You ready? So this is the projected budget for FY twenty-five. Can you scroll down a here? You can see our total there of the three forty deficit or four twenty-two deficit for the general fund is a lot better than last year. There's still some quirks to be worked out. We're still going through some of the maintenance budgets and some of the principal budgets to see. So that number could scoot up to half a million, but this is a really good estimate of where we are currently.
That is over, but.
Correct.
Okay. So that's in the, in the read?
Correct. If it wouldn't have been for the equalization, we'd, we'd be looking at a million dollar deficit for the year.
Which is what we had anticipated.
Correct. So it's probably too much to look at right here, but we'll go through some detail. The next page is where we were at last year. This is last year's approved budget with the two point three million deficit.
So how are we gonna get it where they in the red?
That's up to y'all. We are.
You ain't shown us this tentative yet, right?
Correct. Well, the top one was tentative.
Oh, I thought it was actual up to now.
No, sorry. The top one is tentative FY twenty-five budget.
Okay.
So which is right here.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Up local, correct. And that's before any capital projects or anything that, that y'all have discussed, but haven't really moved forward with. The biggest thing there is we got more money from the state. We get more money locally, but they went up twenty-five hundred dollars a teacher salary. They went up on TRS. They went up on health insurance. It's just, they gave us more and then they made us spend more. It just is what it is. They, they fund it and then they mandate it.
Does that anticipated income include the equalization that we're hoping to get back?
It is. The equalization is included. All of the new QBE numbers are included.
Okay.
And that's been signed, so we should start getting it at the end of July.
So what does it, what does that leave our fund balance at? Three twenty-five or no, this one?
So that, this is last year, so.
What would it leave us?
The top budget is based off of last year's numbers, so it's, cause it says fund balance says July one twenty twenty-four. We obviously haven't gotten to July one twenty twenty-four.
Right.
We are still looking at about five million total in cash and investments right now. So, but we can take a half a million dollar hit with these and hopefully make it up in the future.
Okay.
The other thing is, I mean, if we, if we're, you know, better on our budgets throughout the year, you know, each person, maintenance, principals, all that, we can still save money next year.
But we have the money in the bank to cover.
Correct. Correct. We have not touched the CDs that we put in in February. They're, they're still drawing interest. We're not, hopefully we won't have to burn it.
It was all five percent or something, huh?
Two or five, one five, one's at five, two five, and then the one from last August is at four and a half percent. So they're still.
That itself was what, two million that we poured?
Correct. So that's still off to the side, counting reserves that we have not dipped into.
That's gonna help us too. Every million has fifty thousand dollars in it.
Right. I think we were looking at right at ninety-ish to collect in August.
Okay. So we could, we could take a half a million hit.
No, but that, to me, there is no need to even look at the miller's rate again.
Yeah, right. Can I ask a question? The, the very bottom line, so estimate fund balance, is that gonna say June twenty twenty-five? Is that what it's supposed to say out there?
Correct. It just.
So that's what our, that's what you're estimating it's gonna be the end of next year.
But that's based off of, this, all this runs off of last year's budget. It's uh, to keep it continuous. So that two point six is really probably closer to four million, three and a half to four million. That two point six, is it accurate? It's a number off of last year's budget.
Okay.
That's kinda hard to explain, but it's just the way the software works.
Yeah, but our two point two, that bottom line is what you were saying it's gonna be the end of next year, this time next year.
Based on last year's budget, but I think it'll be higher than that. I think it'll probably be three million.
Okay.
Can I dive into some details?
You said that did not include any capital projects, anything?
I just, all I did was the fifty thousand from last year. I haven't changed it. I was wanting to get more input from y'all on how to move it, cause we can adjust this for the next two weeks.
That includes the fifty thousand?
Correct. You see it at the top, the transfer.
Okay.
So that's all that is. I figured if we were probably going to maybe a hundred and fifty if we move forward with any other projects, but I didn't wanna do anything without y'all's consent first.
We might not get our feet back playing on the ground good before we bump that up.
Main reason, main reason I didn't change it.
I agree with that.
But fifty thousand is good to be able to put it back in there.
Yeah, I think that's just standard kinda what we do, just to, you know, when you have thirty million dollars in facilities, it's kinda hard not to move money around here and there for improvements and capital projects. So this is last year's budget that y'all approved. The next sheet is the variance between them. This may be helpful to see. All the, the negatives at the top is actually increases. So the seven forty was the two mills. I think our mill, one mill was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand this past year. So that's our two mill increase. The other local sources, what, some of that is the interest we're making. And then the one point four seven is our QBE increase. And then the two seventy is some grant money increases. So you can see in the special revenue where they're, the positive numbers, that is the ester funds that we no longer are getting. So those are got, those got pulled out. And then obviously all of our expenses went up basically because we got more money to spend on salaries and insurance and TRS. So this is the major change from last year's budget to this year.
Looks a lot better this year.
And this is as accurate as I can be so far. I mean, we, like I said, it may go a little worse if we have to add to, you know, some repairs or supplies budget just because the cost of everything continues to rise. But we're still trying to work through all that with the principals and Jeff Miller and Guy with Tech. So we're, hopefully we'll have an accurate number in the next week.
Okay, both of her reviewed this at all?
Yes, so she helped me one day and Tuesday. We went through it pretty detailed. I think all of the salaries are spot on. Some of the, you know, the repair columns, we can, you know, fluctuate. But, I mean, our salaries are eighty-five percent of the budget and they're, they're accurate.
Did you, you might have said earlier, did you say that twenty-five budget includes that equalization money?
Correct.
Was that, what was that, six hundred and?
Five seventy-five.
I said, okay. That's what we did, we did, we anticipated getting that from them or we?
Yes, there is signs. So I mean, it's, they've, they've sent us our allotment sheet, so it's, it's installed.
After we lost it this past time, we don't know what that looks like the next year.
Correct. And I mean, it fluctuates every year. Hopefully, I mean, what Steve Smith said, we may get it a couple of years and lose it a couple of years, and it seems like he's gonna be right. So the changes on the next sheet, see that, that three twenty-five number at the top was where our prior, our FY twenty-four budget had us anticipated. So we just, everything is based off of that. So we have our one-year experience, you know, that's our teachers' experience. It's gonna cost us about a hundred K. The cert's got, the cert increase of twenty-five hundred per teacher is three hundred and twenty K. I mean, a lot of this is self-explanatory. Our certified health insurance is almost two hundred. Our non-cert, it isn't as much as I showed at the last meeting, but the reason is because we budgeted last year. They were supposed to go up to fifteen eighty at January first of twenty-four. In the prior CFO had already budgeted for that. So now it's eleven ninety and it's going to fifteen eighty. So it's, most of that's still in the budget from last year. TRS sixty-five. So the state mandated transportation, school nutrition and nurses by four point one percent, which was around thirty K that I shared with y'all last meeting. The custodian supplement is there. We have thirteen plus the benefits, so fourteen and a half. I went ahead and included this, but this is for y'all's discussion and for y'all's vote. Y'all had mentioned what it would cost to increase the rest of our classified staff. So I did every, everyone else by four point one percent as well, and it was fifty-five K. I was kinda shocked that it wasn't more. But that was the number that y'all were looking for, and that is already included in this budget with the four hundred and twenty thousand deficit. So you can see the red and the green. The green, the QBE, that four point eight is our, you know, that's our total QBE for next year, including equalization. The only thing it doesn't include is our security grants. We're supposed to be getting forty-five K of school. And I included it in the bottom and some other grant adjustments, but everything for QBEs should be good. Our property taxes, you can see, abhorrently, we boosted a little bit due to, you know, us being over budget so far this year through every financial. There's our CD. We only had like eight hundred bucks for interest, and so I went to a kinda conservative amount of seventy K, mainly because we'll have to accrue a lot of this interest at June thirtieth. So, and then I don't know what the rates will be in August. I don't know if they'll be, you know, up or down. I'm assuming they'll probably drop a little bit. I'm assuming the government will try to boost the economy before the election, but that's all. I mean, anybody can believe what you want there. Rental income, we haven't been collecting as much, so I dropped it. I think it was fifteen six. I just went down to ten thousand. It's a small number.
On the teachers' money and the custodians and the insurance, what's the difference? What's the number difference in what the state is allowing us, what the state's giving us for them versus what we gotta pay out of pocket? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head. I can pull those numbers. It's close, but it's, you know, it's all off FTE. So like, we are pretty even at the elementary school. Middle school's close, but then the high school is not.
So it's not a major difference in what they're making us do for the certified and the insurance, cause I know all that, that increase, and that's what you're talking about.
Yes, correct. It's, it's not bad. I think, I think our total insurance was one point nine million on certified, and they're paying like one point seven-ish. So I mean, it is two hundred grand, but that's just in the, you know, the FTE numbers. I have more detail of the employee replacements, but they kinda, there wasn't a huge change money-wise. But obviously BOE, new superintendent, new assistant superintendent, new roles in the board office. Elementary school, we had some younger teachers come in, not as much experience, so we gained a little money back. The opposite happened in the middle school. We lost a few younger ones and replacing them with some older teachers that would cost. In the high school, so like we had our, our Spanish teacher left. And the teacher coming in is retired, so we're not paying those benefits. We gained a lot of money in spots like that. Pair pro adjustments was the same deal. We, we had a couple of people come in with more experience than where we had and just cost a little more, but nothing major. Transportation, that is basically adding a bus driver, I think, from last year's budget. I think we only budgeted for twenty and we're up to twenty-one drivers. There's the impact aid that I added. It's, like I said, it's two forty-five, and then we expect another twenty-five throughout the year. I think they're gonna go ahead and pay last year's amount in the next two or three months, and then we should get equalization, I mean, should get impact aid. Is it January somewhere? I can't remember.
It's usually February.
February. We should get both amounts next year. I mean, I, we anticipate it, so according to the state law, I think we should include it.
I think I've asked this before. You might, are we in line with our pair pros? What we pay them is what the surrounding counties get. Do we know that?
I'm gonna say we are not in line with Columbia County, the rest, you know, Thompson, Washington. I would think so. I can do some research and find out, but that is included.
I guess I hear a lot of complaints about that, and it'd be nice to know. If we're, if we're in line, we're in line, but if we're not, we're.
And I'm gonna show you their salary schedule too, not to, I mean, just to show you the facts of what they are. Not each teacher's pay, but our, our schedule.
Was that, was that including that four point one percent increase up, up on here of higher, you know, the non-certs?
Yes, sir. All that, all that was before.
So if we are planning on giving a four percent raise, that probably won't touch what it needs to be, is what we're talking about.
Now, that's bus drivers and everything, right?
That's, that's every classified employee. That's school food, that's our secretaries, the accounting staff, bus drivers, everybody else other than certs and admin that, that got the money from the state. I just went ahead and included it to show kind of a, you know, total expense. A new updated supplement. The biggest change here was Michael Williams going from eleven month to twelve month. So this supplement does not show that. It's supplement for extended year would double. But everything else was numbers I think that y'all had already agreed on for Dr. Gumry, Dr. Cunningham, and then Cassidy's is the same as last year. Principal supplements have not changed. You know, this is disgusting that you guys can make. I didn't change any of it, based on it. I know our middle school sports program is growing and Ms. Burke goes to all of those. So she, she's been saying that she feels like she's Dr. Wolfsky now, but once again, that's up to y'all to change that supplement.
We're looking for recommendations.
I'm just, it really, it's not my place. I just know she spends a lot of time at, you know, sporting events like Dr. Wolfsky does, so it may be something to look into if y'all are open to it. I mean, we're looking at basically a thousand dollars to get her on Dr. Wolfsky's level. And I, I mean, to do that, I don't know. Is it technically, would you have to make her a twelve month? I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
But Ms. Gullman has six grades, right?
Correct.
And Ms. Burke has three grades.
Dr. Wolfsky has four grades.
Dr. Wolfsky has four grades, and I realize they got after school stuff, but they didn't wait. Need to look at all that.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Dr. Goldman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it's the same thing with our assistant principals. None of that changed. High school supplements are the same as last year. The only one I think I didn't include was Randy and Carol Lee. I think we gave that in the past to maybe Ashley Rivera, but I don't think that amount is agreed upon in Randy and Carol Lee's proposed contract to teach musical theater. And I have some more numbers on that too that I can present. Put the rest of that as standard from last year.
Now, if I may, this position fell under me. Right now, Carla Matthews is our GOIP coordinator. Anything that goes wrong with GOIP or any teacher have issues, they always call Carla. So this position's been around, I think, four or five years, and at the time, Ms. Ball agreed to do it for Middleland High School. So that's one thing we can look at. Maybe shifting that money or taking that money away, yes. Even if it's not shifted to her, whatever I wanna do, I just know Ms. Ball, that role is not there for her anymore. She would sit in as a team lead in meetings, but we don't do that anymore. The principals now and assistant principals take that role.
So what is, okay, what is the color guard sponsor? What does that do as part?
Band. Flat girls.
Okay, okay, okay. And then the musical theater coach?
See, I, that is actually not included. I need to eliminate that part. So they're getting their salary amounts that they agreed upon, and that's it. This is not included in there. So I can take that amount out. I didn't catch that before I printed it. And then our CTA agree, CTA grants are paid by the state, so we don't, most of those are, you know, money in, money out from the state. We don't really have much say-so there. Middle school supplements is the same as last year.
I did see, uh, Regil on twelve month.
Correct. He is, uh, he is.
I can call him anytime.
That's right.
Well, I didn't even know. I seen him going down.
Yeah, I hope he don't have no rick.
He was scared. Anyway, it's good. He had a tractor out there. I had a, what was that thing?
I got chicken coop on the front of it.
Is that what it was? I didn't know what it was, Bill. A full half of the road wheel.
Probably the ones the kids built issue.
It looked good.
Kids build it issue.
Our elementary school supplements have not changed either. I'm really just showing y'all this to show you what it is. I don't know justifiably, do you increase it or not? I would say for the deficit you would have. But it's, it's nice to have all the facts of, you know, what each supplement is. So this is our local teacher supplement. Easiest way to look at this is the T four, a brand-new T four. We get twenty-three hundred and eleven dollars. And our highest paid, so like our T sevens, our highest amount is forty-four forty-four. I think this scale has been around for a while. I mean, could you increase it? Obviously, we do have the funds to do it, but at the same time, the teachers got twenty-five hundred dollars from the state. So, I mean, the only reason you would really mess with this would be to compete with the Columbia County if we were losing teachers. I think our biggest deal there would be with subs and pair pros versus actually losing teachers. Our athletic supplements, Coach Homskis and Coach Huff have boosted the athletic supplements by roughly twenty K. Some of that is salary increase for Coach Homskis based on the state scale, and then the extended year for Coach Homskis, Coach Huff and Coach Parker Martin. But their increases to the supplement list were for basketball, soccer and track, and they're pretty much all middle school sports. They're heavy on wanting to increase middle school sports to compete with surrounding counties. I know Washington gets brought up a lot.
You can go back now.
So obviously, this is still at y'all's discretion.
So this is, this was recommend, this is basically their recommendation.
This is their recommendation, and I have a sheet that I can send you guys with the, the changes and what it is. I didn't include that on here. I just gave the, you know, the numbers they wanted.
Yeah, that was, that was gonna be a question I had. Do we need to look at coaching supplement to, you know, to make sure that all that's in line? But if they borrow, if this is something the athletic director and the head coach has looked at, then.
And this, is this, this is on our assembly now, right? We can.
Correct, yes. Correct. It's all public, and I'll be sending you more information in the next couple of weeks.
And the bowl out to the right are the changes, is that right?
No, sir. That is their total. So if you look at the top, Coach Homskis, he has four different amounts on here. It's football coach, varsity baseball, his salary is paid by the athletic, you know, local funds, and then his extended year. So that is his total salary.
So we don't have what it was, okay?
No, sir. I can send you that there. So like, I know soccer, they were going from two thousand to four thousand to get more in line with basketball and baseball.
That's good.
Track is the same. I don't see a track on here. It must be on the next page. There they are. Track, I think, was maybe twelve fifty, and they boosted it to twenty-five hundred. And then all, all of the middle schools, base, I wanna say they basically doubled. They went from a thousand to two thousand, or some at the bottom are maybe.
I think it was six fifty.
So a lot of them were, that's all of them. A lot of them were like six fifty, and he moved them to either twelve hundred or fifteen hundred. But I can, I can give you the exact changes to each sport.
You know right off, have you heard what the total increase was?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Hundred and eighty-six thousand.
I think we were around one sixty-five or slash year, so around twenty K total.
Twenty thousand, okay.
But some of that, like I said, is in Coach Homskis's extended year and salary, and then Coach Martin and Coach Huff's. So probably seventeen-ish without the state increasing.
So they went through all of those then?
Correct, and we only have the two open spots as of now that I know of, which is JV cheer and middle school baseball. I think the new ones were Coach Joyner, who is a new teacher for FY twenty-five year, and Fred Turner, community coach for softball.
So Coach Homskis took the varsity baseball, so we're still open for middle school baseball.
Correct. And I, I don't know what the plan is for middle school baseball.
Ms. Rayner, let me see here if she's.
So she was at, I think, five hundred total for, you know, all the stuff she does. They boosted her to a thousand, which probably still isn't enough with all the paperwork she handles. Ms. Stacy Rafford was at three hundred. They boosted her to five, so it was a lot of, a lot of small changes for that, but, you know, probably are much needed.
Most of that's not done for the money.
Exactly, exactly.
No, we just, it's just a little bit of hill.
It's something to say thank you for taking this, but that's a, I'm just looking like, you know, some of those up there, the money they're getting for the time they spend.
Spend is miniscule.
Our bus drivers went up probably eight K-ish, but that number come from the state, the twenty-nine twenty-two. I think it was twenty-six hundred last year. We had only budgeted for twenty drivers. I wanna say we were around fifty-three K last year, and it's up to sixty-one, but all that's state numbers.
And our bus drivers are inland also with surrounding counties.
Right.
I hear a lot from bus drivers.
Well, I mean, they, we, we were paying the state, so it's kinda like teachers.
We wanted to be competitive, cause we got good people on. So how much did we give up on our supplement? Did you tell us?
Total?
What, per, per person, per drive, for three hundred dollars, huh?
Uh, the, their total salary went up.
Three grand, so the whole, that's for all of them.
For, that's each, yes, sir.
That's each?
That's each bus driver, but that's not, that's not the change. That is the total supplement.
Okay.
I think last year's supplement was twenty-six or twenty-seven hundred, but they also got another probably three fifty or four hundred from the state.
And they're gonna get the twenty-five hundred?
No, no, they got four point one percent. And that's what, that's what that number increased by.
Okay.
That, that's what that is?
Correct.
Okay.
This is state number. It went from like ten-five to ten-eight, and then twenty-six hundred to twenty-nine, probably twenty-seven hundred to twenty-nine hundred left of supplement.
With the inflation, it's just hard to keep up with all this, you know? They probably.
They got forty dollars a month.
Taking a cut.
Thirty dollars a month, roughly. That's what they got. That's what it amounts to, I guess.
Well, and your inflation for groceries by itself won't buy more than that.
I know, that's why.
Total. Total.
Yeah. I miss across the board.
Well, this ain't just started, this been going on ever since the United States been, uh, always going up.
Really fought over a two percent tax in seventy-nine.
Yeah.
This is just our maintenance supplement right now. Uh, Mr. Bill Davis is the only one getting it. Nobody agreed to do it at the high school. I think that, uh, job is still getting done, but, um, our manager didn't want to do it. So I guess there's some paperwork or something to it. I don't know why she didn't agree to it. Um, so it's really just the three grand, not the six that we were paying. Like I said, I don't know why I didn't get into the details, but she says she didn't want it.
Wow. Even though she's doing the job?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what all the requirements are, but I didn't ask, I just see yes mail. So here's our total supplement. Uh, it's not a change, this is just our total supplements before benefits and after benefits.
Time out. So who's getting that three thousand? Nobody, somebody's doing the job though, aren't they?
Doing the job, but it's-
Who's doing it?
Melissa Durham.
But she doesn't want to-
It's one part she doesn't want to do, so she said she didn't want the title. I, I don't know what to do.
Who, nobody doing the part? I don't even know what you're digging into this right now.
It's really, I don't understand it either, I really don't.
It's good, they'll probably talk about it and say-
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, who of us doing it ought to get the money? Or some of it?
We can explain it later.
Okay.
We can explain it later.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either. I hope y'all figure it out.
Yeah, we, we know, we can explain it later.
Okay.
No problem.
So there's our total local supplements that, uh, we just went through. So next, we were asking about payroll scales. Uh, this is my accounting department minus me. Um, the scales we went on, and all of these scales have been increased by the four point one percent that I included in the budget, the, the fifty-five thousand change. The thing here is a lot of our employees have been here at least thirteen years, so they're all capped out.
That's a good sign, though.
They got, do what now?
That's a good sign, though, they've been here-
Capped out, correct.
We're there on mercy, right?
You say so.
We're looking for recommendations every day.
Well, all, all of these have already increased by four point one percent. Obviously, y'all can change that, but that is of the year. But, um, I just went ahead and included them to give you the numbers of what it would cost to increase them. We can always go back. This is our maintenance, obviously, we have a director and then two assistants, and then, I think, thirteen or fourteen custodians and groundskeepers. Now, media clerks, two media clerks, one at elementary, one at middle high.
How's Mr. Fox doing? What I've seen with-
I've been pretty happy with what he's done. I think he's been very reasonable with the extra things that we asked him about, which was one of our fears, because you remember when we bid that, that he bid pretty low and got the, the job to see if he could do the job.
Right.
But the extra things we've asked him to do have been reasonably priced, in my opinion, as well. So I think he's done pretty well.
Yeah, when you don't hear anything, it's good.
That's correct. Yeah, you don't get the calls that, you know, are you gonna grow the, mow the grass this month or not? And we don't get those anymore, which is great.
They're shrubbing a lot, and I guess been kept up pretty good with straw and all that too.
Right. You haven't been calling any?
I check it out, that's my job. I know I ain't supposed to, but I-
Micro man. So there's our paraprob, uh, salary scale that has already been adjusted, but you can see it still tips out at twenty-two thousand.
So when you, when you say experience, that doesn't mean is you have to work here that long, does it?
No, sir. If you transfer from another school, you know, with five years' experience, we start you at five.
Okay. Now, is that kind of like discretionary a little bit?
Uh, we get, uh, schools send, you know, verified experience documents between, between board offices. That's just one to me that it seems like we struggle, especially elementary school. I mean, elementary school's been paraprob, probably has the hardest job in the school without a doubt.
And the least paid.
Correct.
Well, we're looking for recommendations.
It's the same with across the board, though, at every school, though, isn't it? I mean, just paraprobs, just-
Yeah, I don't know what-
Not certificated teachers, so they just don't get paid.
Correct.
They don't get paid to take care of our kids like they should possibly, is that? Could look at a lot of that.
I just know from my experience this year, that's the two spots. Just paraprobs, we've got paraprobs in and out, and so it's hard to find so. So that's just an area that we could try to address, but, um...
But, quick question now. If a teacher retired and comes back and subs for a day, do they get their regular sub pay, or do they get-
One day, do they?
Well, if it, if it's one day, they would get the certificated sub pay if they do one day, just like a-
So it is differs than non-certified sub?
Correct, absolutely. You get the certified sub pay, there is a difference there. Hold on, Michael, yes?
I was gonna say, well, if they have a degree, it's the same. If you have any degree, whether you're a teacher or not, it's the same. So just because you're a retired teacher, the difference don't come in play until you do long term.
Well, the, the difference is the degree.
Yeah.
So that portion of it per day is true. Now, if it goes into long term, then you get to their state base.
But I'm saying, if my wife was retired and went and subbed one day, and I went and subbed one day, would she get more than me?
You would get seven, and she would get sixty, I think.
But if you have four-year degrees, it's the same.
Okay, well, see, I do have four-year degrees.
You're gonna get the same.
I thought it was eighty or ninety.
I don't know, that's right.
You don't get allowance for your degree as a teacher.
They don't come and play until long-term sub. So as long as you got a four-year degree, it don't matter if you're a certified teacher or not. You sub three days, it's the same. So, yeah, you get paid the same as Marcella Goldman, where she was a long-term sub, and she comes in, you and Marcella get paid the same.
Is that, is that a state mandate, or are district mandates that based on what we decided fifty years ago? District.
I just think a certified teacher ought to get a little more if they're subbing, then somebody would have, just because you got a four-year degree. I mean, you can get a four-year degree. About everything, it'd take, it'd take some people seven years to get them.
Survey them.
If you want to get a certified teacher to come back, you might want to increase. If you want to get a certified teacher to come back, you know, I-
I would just think the children got more, get more out of it if you had a certified.
Without question, absolutely.
And that would attract them possibly to come back and help you with your sub problem. So we don't know that, we're just-
Yeah, we're gonna listen to them.
We're looking for recommendations.
Okay. This can definitely be brought up, because this is something that I agree needs to be, uh, hit on. I think a sub now with no college degree gets eighty dollars a day. A sub with it, it's less than that?
It's sixty.
I mean, I don't know.
Eight hours.
Yeah.
Eight hours?
Is that even minimum wage?
See what I mean?
Six times a day.
So that was sixty dollars.
That was it?
It's sixty dollars.
I think seventy with the degree.
Seventy with the degree.
Yeah. This is, this same as it was in the seventies, right?
No, it went up ten dollars with, two years ago?
Two years ago, we increased it.
Seventy dollars per hour.
We increased it two years ago.
Now you see why we have trouble finding subs.
Yeah.
See how you do it. How you do it? Looking for recommendations. I think we definitely need to address it. He's gone a little bit wide. Um, but no, we can come up with some more numbers and, uh, and send them out. So there's the bus driver rate I was saying. It went from like ten-five to ten-eight, and then the local went from twenty-seven to twenty-nine-ish. Uh, we do pay routes based on time and mileage, so like Ms. Carla Dornberg goes to, uh, Thompson every day, she gets the thirty-six hundred, but everybody else is from two-seventy-eight to eleven, twelve, based on their route length and time.
Mechanic and director, they don't do too bad.
What happens as far as the field trips and taking the, uh, athletic teams and all that?
Those are additional pay based on field trip rate, which is, I want to say it's fifteen seventy-five, I think it is. I think something like that.
Is it a flat rate or is it?
It's fifteen seventy-five an hour. So if you, if you're gone for, let's say, if you run the, the football team to Clinch County, you're gonna have a whole lot more on your field trip than if you run the elementary school to the Augusta Zoo and back.
I just, I was talking to somebody that they did a flat rate. Flat rate for athletic teams, flat rate for field trips. And if you take a field trip over here to the library, get paid the same amount if you take a field trip to South Georgia.
I don't know if that's fair, because you're behind the wheel for so long.
Right, but it was all, he was saying it'd all equal out. It'd all equal out, because you could get the same amount regardless of where you went, I don't know.
I think, I mean, it does equal out monetarily, but then you have trouble finding somebody to drive to Clinch County.
The long distance.
That's right, yeah. You have somebody that will be driving at midnight on the way home versus-
You got a bunch of them will drive to the library.
Yeah, everybody's gonna sign, everybody's gonna sign up and take fifth grade from elementary school to middle school.
It's hard to work. It's hard, yeah.
So this is all I have, uh, currently. Not obviously discussed anymore, but that is a very broad overview of where we are at the moment.
Thank you. How many hours in a substitute's day?
Two to eight.
Eight or nine hours?
What's the real day?
I guess six to eight, eight to nine.
Six, seven, thirty, three thirty, right? That's right.
And they get called sometimes an hour before they need to be here, I mean.
More or less.
So you were asking, when do they get teacher pay again? That would be their making out.
What is the minimum wage?
Forty-five consecutive days, that is outrageous.
Seven, seventy-five minimum wage?
We're not even paying minimum wage.
For subs?
Seven.
We are for everything, that's full-time, but we're not for subs, they're contracted employees.
I think we need to look at that.
Yeah, yeah. That's why we're having a hard time.
I mean, you told the daughter Goldman, she's gonna be adamant about this. She struggles every day. I know she wanted, she wanted a full-time sub just to have somebody on standby with as many people as they have in and out of elementary school.
And they don't have benefits either, right?
No.
No.
Paraprobs do, subs do not.
Okay.
And you take social security out on this, or is it, you got, you gotta do all of the benefit stuff?
I think we may pay social security, but that would be, yeah, no, we don't pay any.
You do pay social security, though.
I think so.
So it's even less than this one.
I think so.
Time to take that out.
I'm pretty sure we do.
We make high school students work with us more than this. I'm embarrassed.
This is something we can definitely change.
Looking for recommendations.
Thank you for this, this is good to have. I never had really known that.
Thank you, Mr. Wee. Well, it's like you brought up, if your wife retired this year and got called in to sub in August, is she gonna want to take-
She should make way more, way more than me.
I mean, is she gonna take a seventy-five percent pay cut to come back and sub for a day?
No.
And this is the problem we face with everybody that's wanting to come back. Because they do, I mean, a teacher misses it. They want to come back and see the kids every once in a while, but they don't want to do it for free.
And you wouldn't have to do the full amount, because you don't have to pay the retirement and stuff. I mean, you could figure it out.
Work their while.
Yeah, there's no, there's no health insurance or retirement.
Yeah, and that's a big, that's a lot of time.
The bus driver, all of this needs to be looked at. Bus drivers get four dollars a day in the sub.
And they basically work four hours just-
It is hard to have a bus driver license. It is hard. A lot of time is lost.
It's hard, yeah, it's difficult.
Pre-trip, all that stuff you gotta do now.
Say, just before, Billy Biggs passed his pilot license the first time, and it took him three times to get his-
CDS?
Yeah, CDA.
So I mean, it's, uh-
CDA is tough now. It used to not be that, it's rough now.
Forty dollars per day for a bus driver.
Yeah, I know, it's there for me.
That usually catches a lot of people, is it?
I'm saying, I know it's tough.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You just want to do it.
You'll give us a lot.
Same show.
That's why they go. I will, I'll work on them.
Ain't doing it for that number, Ryan.
Before next week.
Ain't doing it for the insurance.
And obviously, we can review stuff at any time. I want to remind you, we cannot have more than two board members at a time, or it becomes a quorum and it's considered a meeting, that's public record. But other than that, you know, if anybody, if you got a question, you want to swing by, feel free, call me. We can get through anything you'd like.
Question, um, I know we talked about the capital projects and maybe just leaving all that like it is. Are we looking into the soccer builder? We need to move some money for that. The, you know, I was looking, thinking back, we, well, are we four-twenty-two deficit right now?
Local fund, yes, sir.
Yeah, if we added, you know, if we added fifty more for the soccer building, that'd put us at four-seventy-something deficit. Um, but I don't, I don't know, that's something we need to decide. You know, I know they're willing that, but I don't necessarily mean they get that.
We had to read that.
Yeah, I know.
We need to come up with a plan utilizing the existing building, extending it out. Isn't that what we're talking about? That will be the least extension.
Well, the problem with extending the existing building is, that is a existing building in the school, a part of the school. And if you extend that building, it has to follow the state guidelines for where students are. Whereas if you built a separate building-
It's gotta follow the state guidelines, yeah.
No, I think not like-
No, no, you don't, it's not classroom.
It's not a classroom space, it's not-
You're not gonna draw FTE out of that building consequently. You don't have to follow those state guidelines, you're improving your facility based on need.
And that's something that we could, we could do, uh, you know.
We can put the money in there, but we don't have to spend it.
Well, that's right, I mean, we don't have to put it in there. I mean, we can put, we don't have to put it in there and still be able to spend it. I mean, we just, at some point in time, transfer the money into the, you know, into capital projects if that's what we have to do.
We're looking at fifty grand and a four, five million dollar cash on hand.
So-
As you look at creating that soccer building, you also need to consider some Title IX restrictions. If you're gonna use it for soccer, you got girls and boys in there, and you're fine. If you let tennis come in there, you got girls and boys, you're fine. If you let baseball come in there, now you gotta build a softball building. You follow where I'm going with this? So you, you have to be careful that you don't put yourself in a corner that you can't get out of, and you're building something else. So if you make it a soccer building, you're good. A track building, you're good. A tennis building, you're good. All three of those teams share it, you're good.
Right.
As soon as you add baseball, or heaven forbid, football, now you got Title IX issue. So be careful with that, it's just, I'm just trying to help.
Yeah, so why would you do that? I mean, I know what you're saying, but whoa. The thought was, we're going, it's gonna be soccer and tennis, right?
That's correct. Well, I've heard soccer. Or track.
Soccer, track. Yeah.
Or that's it, soccer and track.
Which is both fine, because you got girls and boys playing the exact same sport.
Right.
You're good. I'm just trying to, I, I've heard some conversation about baseball can use that. I've heard some conversation about softball now gets a building. I've heard some conversation about who else could use that. I just want the board to understand the restrictions to that, because I sure don't want you to come back in years and say, now we gotta build this building because nobody told us. I just want the board to understand the restrictions to that, cause I sure don't want you to come back in years and say, now we gotta build this building, cause nobody told us. That's not fair to y'all, so it just helps you make a decision on who's gonna be in there and who's not.
Guess my biggest question is, do you have to do plumbing with the bathrooms already under the, under the tractor field entrance?
Well, my thought was, if we're gonna do, do the building, I'd go ahead and put the plumbing in slab. And, and have the separate, we're going, the building was gonna have two separate rooms, you know, one for boys, one for girls, that kinda thing. And then a bathrooms in between. Go ahead and put the plumbing in the building, even if we didn't do the bathroom right now. And then you just got a, just a building, you know, for them to go in, whatever, get. Change clothes, yeah, just like a locker room, basically.
So, so the way that thing is designed over here at the high school, I don't know, you got a green, y'all call it a green room? You got locker rooms over there, you got, I don't even know all the rooms over there, but that was built for football, is that right? Football? What is? I mean, is there, is there a way to actually have a room over there for soccer and one for baseball?
The locker rooms are for the kids during the day, their PE classes, so the only locker room in there specifically is for football. So I guess, what you said, and basketball, basketball too, but when I was principal, every period had their own locker room inside of that gym.
I guess I'm asking, is there enough rooms over there where you could dedicate a room to each program? Soccer and one for softball, baseball.
Where do they get dressed now?
Yes, I mean.
I mean, girls softball get dressed in bathrooms. Locker rooms. Basketball locker rooms.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wayne.
Girls, you could have one of those rooms co- closed off. I know the boys, they don't have cages in front, so it would be closed off, for boys, you could, now, I, I, I don't wanna upset. But I mean, we would just say, once football season over with, the next team is using that locker room. So you can make boys use that football locker room, and that can be, until spring practice, they got an issue, but spring practice generally after. So I mean, that would be a, but again, I understand the dynamics, uh, but we want a good football program, so. We didn't care what they said, that was the soccer and the other sports once it was over. Cause I think even basketball, we used the football locker room, football season's over with, we used it and we finished, soccer used it. I mean, girls, you could put them in that, but the thing is, you gotta go all the way back, it's not like right where they compete at. So that is one way you could, but again, logistically, you're gonna kinda have maybe some issues. And then if the girls, the boys use the football locker room, then girls gonna be in a smaller PE room. Then you're gonna have complaints probably, but that's the only thing I can see where you can use a room that's there. That's not being used until spring practice or football season. That is a whole big room that boys could at least use to have a changing place, place the locker stuff. But again, once you're dressing everything, that's a long walk to haul it back, you know, to get back to the locker room.
And I guess we needed to set out and decide too.
But soccer is shorts and a t-shirt, it's not like you tote and shoulder pads and.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, you know, what, if we do a building for soccer, what justifies soccer and track and that's not doing one for softball?
Baseball.
Yeah, cause they don't have one.
Baseball's got that, that little space underneath where the press box is for the announcer. Baseball's got that little space underneath that they have used as a locker room for a number of years.
But is it the plan to make that the concession stand moving forward?
Uh, that may be somebody's plan, I don't know that that's been approved, but you're gonna have to invest some money to knock that whole wall out. And in the past, I think it was two years ago, maybe three, we put a camera system up and a monitor. So that the people working in the concession stand can actually see the game by looking at the monitor. That was a huge complaint initially, so we put that in so that they could see it. And Jeff Miller, in fact, yesterday told me that he got a complaint that that wasn't good enough, they wanted to see it face to face.
So look.
Sorry, I can't help.
Get back to the, what I asked originally about over there adding on. Now that I'm thinking about, we don't even need to add on, we have, when you walk through that open, you got a men's, boys restroom on one side and girls on the. If you go in that restroom, you cut a hole in the wall, the back wall, there's a big room that is full of junk.
On both sides?
Yeah, all you gotta do is block up where those doors are and have a door in there and you put your lockers in there. It's a room on each side, one for the girls and one for the boys.
One of them got mechanical in it, I don't know what all is involved, I know that one on the right side, girl's side is slapped full of mechanical.
Mechanical what? Air conditioning?
No, it, when I say it's like all power and everything coming into the building and.
We need to look at that though.
Yeah, we could look at that.
I mean, still, even if you have to add some block, make the building a little bit longer, that's not a huge expense.
They use that for track storage and those kinda things, that was the idea of that areas, of track storage and, and that kinda thing. To keep it out of carrying the, the hurdles as an example, or the, the high jump pit all the way to the school every day.
You could build a little building out there like we're talking about and not have blown or anything, just walls and roof and.
Thing too, thinking about it, you know, if. Go out and do a building, nice building for soccer and track, then everybody's gonna be like, hey, wait a minute, where's my building?
I was thinking that baseball is gonna say.
What about the room that's right on the other side of the practice field that was added? What, what do we keep in there? Is that what, yeah, I didn't know what it was.
It's a story building, all the football stuff in it.
I have nothing to get to, but I just found out Warren County pays a hundred dollars flat rate for subs.
Hundred dollars flat rate?
Hundred dollar flat rate, until you get to the other, so whether you have a degree or not, they pay a hundred dollars a sub. And then once you get to long term, when you have to have a degree, they go to state rate, and I'll reset some other places, but I got another meeting at that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, do we have any other questions? Yes, sir.
Would you like to go ahead and do tentative approval of this, it's not, obviously it's not just this, but it is to get. The bu, it's really just to get the budget finalized before June thirtieth.
That's what I was gonna, we need to vote to just tentatively approve this budget.
That's the next item on the agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve it as presented.
Have a motion, Mr. Heilich. My Mr. Mungren, on paper. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to, oh, we got to date, right?
Will that be on next week?
We can do it, we do public participation right before the meeting at six-thirty, meeting at seven.
Do it six o'clock to give them time in case you get a few, that's up to the board, that's up to the board, I'm just saying that sometimes you get a few and sometimes you don't. Whatever y'all decide.
I guess if we, if we did six-thirty and then it pushed, you know, to ten after seven or something before we got the regular board meeting started, it wouldn't be a big deal. So let's just, uh.
I guess we could always start the meeting and then go back, public participation, couldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, let's just, uh, let's do that, we'll just, six-thirty, which is.
June eleventh, I think.
June eleventh, okay, six-thirty, June eleventh before.
Public participation on the, I mean, approval if it gets that far.
Nothing else, I made a motion to adjourn. Second, by Miss Daniel. Thank you all very much.